Guys, welcome to the I Love Seaville Show. It's Jerry Miller. Good Monday to you. I hope the weekend certainly treated you well. Great to be with you. A lot we're going to cover on the I Love Seaville Show with Bob Fenwick, one-time Charlottesville City Council Councillor, who's now back in the race, you know, hunting a seat in what is a competitive and crowded field so far for the 2019 Charlottesville City Council Race with three seats on the horizon and three seats up for grabs. That June 11th primary is certainly going to be a heated primary and certainly going to go a long way with determining these three open seats. We'll put Bob Fenwick in the spotlight here across Charlottesville, Alamo County, and Central Virginia. We'll get to know Bob, his platform, his passions, his interests, what he likes to do. The man, I can safely say, is incredibly passionate about the city of Charlottesville and Central Virginia in totality. We're going to try to showcase that passion here on the I Love Seaville Show. The only thing I ask of you is if you like and share this stream. Like the show, share the show. That's all I ask. We put a lot of effort into it, and if you could do that, that would mean the world to us. Before we get to Bob Fenwick, let's thank the fine folks who make this program possible. First, Sean and Roxanne Simmons at Greenberry's Coffee. Twenty-eight years ago, a husband and wife had a dream of opening a craft coffee shop at a time when no one was drinking craft coffee. The roasting facility was in the McIntyre Office Park. The first location was in Barracks Road Shopping Center. You saw Sean and Roxanne Simmons behind the counter often. Now it's a global business with locations in Japan, Qatar, Saudi Arabia, soon to open in Portland, Oregon, a location in Washington DC, McLean, and Harrisonburg. Sean and Roxanne Simmons of Greenberry's Coffee, the kind of entrepreneurial stories we love to showcase here on the I Love Seaville Show. Also want to give some big-time props to Dr. Scott Wagner, Scott Wagner of Scott Wagner Chiropractic and Sports Medicine. The good doctor is changing people's lives. Who's got your back? Scott Wagner of Scott Wagner Chiropractic and Sports Medicine most certainly has your back. Harris Tolber, the director, Judah Whitkower and Lauren Linsky, the producers of this fine program. I think on that note, my friend Harris Tolber, let's welcome the man, the myth, the legend, Bob Fenwick to the show.
Thank you, Jerry.
Hey, it's great to have you, Bob Fenwick.
Yeah, it's great to be here. I mean, I love this setup here.
Thank you very much.
And I like the way you let in with the Greenberry Coffee, because that's the critical part of the city that I'd like to talk about, the small business.
I love it. I love it. As a small business owner myself, I love to talk about entrepreneurship. I love to positively spotlight entrepreneurs. I am someone who works 70 to 80 hours a week. My family is a one-income family. My wife is literally at home right now doing receivables and payables in project management and watching the program as a producer while our 11-month-old son is on her lap and she's feeding him formula. So we have small business in our blood. I'm going to start with an open-ended question for you. I think the $77 million question that everyone in Charlottesville, Virginia, wants to know is Bob Fenwick, you are choosing to get back in the race. Why is Bob Fenwick getting back in the race here for Charlottesville City Council?
Well, I think the story that I have to tell is very important for the city, not just for you and myself and other people and the Greenberry sponsor you have. We understand, personally speaking, I wake up in the middle of the night wondering if I can make my insurance payments. It's that kind of a day-to-day living that many small businesses have. We do not need people looking over our shoulder or taxing us when you don't need to be taxing people. So the question was, why am I getting back in? I think that story needs to be told over and over and over. People need to know when small businesses say we can't afford a tax increase, they mean it. And that's the story that I'll keep telling them.
I like it. Let's turn that into a sizzle reel. Harris Tolber, we're going to take portions of the program and turn them into highlights, which we will send your way so you can use any way you want. I'll give you a personal anecdote and throw it back to you. We are a family of three, my wife, myself, and our son. And our insurance, our monthly payments are astronomical, just short of $1,000 with a $13,000 deductible. And that $13,000 deductible cannot be used by one person. It has to be shared amongst the three. Basically, what I'm saying, Bob Fenwick, is we are paying for catastrophic coverage alone and coverage that really, from a short-term or mid-term, is going to do nothing from a value proposition standpoint for my family. But because we have a baby, instead of paying the yearly fine for not having health insurance, we choose to have the health insurance because we have a little boy that means the absolute world to us. And I've given some thought to running to the 5th District, to challenging Denver Riggleman in the 5th. And one of the key tenants of my platform is this: healthcare reform. Charlottesville and Alamo County have unreasonably high health insurance premiums. Why are we waiting for a federal solution on a local problem?
Really? Really? And the question, really, you could stop at why? How is it that Charlottesville, Charlottesville, Virginia, a small city, a small town, has the highest rates of Virginia, I believe, if not the highest, second or third highest, or across the country? How does that happen to us? That's the questions that we're trying to make a living, and we still are trying to figure this out. Because if we don't pay our bills, you know, people are going to come after us. And that's not a situation that's good for anybody.
Unfortunately, how we've gotten to this point is because we don't have the marketplace options. Competition breeds competitive pricing. And the options we have from a health insurance standpoint in Alamo County and the city of Charlottesville are limited compared to other municipalities in other areas of the country. As a result, the limited options that we have in Alamo County and Charlottesville and Central Virginia, they are pretty much have a monopoly and they could do what they want from a pricing standpoint. And as a result, we are left picking up the pieces. Bob Fenwick, the show is yours. You can go in any direction you want.
All right. Well, you know, I understand. I've heard that argument, Jerry. But my question right after that is still, how do we get in that situation? Because you have one insurance company who is doing pretty well if they don't have any competition. Now, it seems to me there has to be other insurance companies out of there that would want to jump into this. Now, personally, I have never, I've been in a competitive business for-
Construction, right?
Construction, small contractor-
Right.
For, let me see, now 50 years, maybe? And it's always competitive. I have never asked for the government for anything. I'm a vet, so the VA is available to me. I have to go to Richmond if I want to go to the hospital. GI Bill I used. But other than that, I've never asked for the government to give me clients, a break on any tax break or anything like that. It's every day you're hustling. So I still am not satisfied with the answer about the insurance. One person, one entity in our community handling the insurance, that should be a market that's ripe for competition.
Absolutely. What are the solutions then? I mean, I agree 100%. How do we solve the conundrum?
Well, you're always looking, when that happens-
I'm an entrepreneur, I want answers.
When that happens, you're usually looking at Richmond. You're usually looking at state or federal. In this state, we're probably looking at Richmond.
Okay.
That's the problem. So best of luck if you jump into this. We need somebody in there who's energetic, who knows the business, who knows what happens when small businesses are not treated properly. So best of luck. You know, that's part of the answer. You don't just leave it up to local politicians like me or the competitors I have. It's Richmond, and each person does their part that they can do. It's not just one silver bullet that's going to take care of this. So that would be my answer. And I would actually look to you if you jump into this. Why is it that we only have one insurance provider? That is just not right.
It's wrong. It's everything that I do not stand for as an entrepreneur. What I love, and I'm going to throw it back to you, and you know, the show is not about me, it's about you. But if I do choose that path, I'm libertarian by nature, very socially liberal, very physically conservative. And I don't want the government in my business. You know, I work hard. I wake up at 4:45 in the morning every day, ready to kick the day's ass and make it mine. And I, every single day, have to wake up and figure out a way to drive incremental revenue while maintaining the current clients we have and keeping them satisfied.
That's right.
It's the plight of an entrepreneur and a small business owner, a C-suite executive. Jump in here. How does it relate to you?
Keeping the customers satisfied, that's what it is. It's competitive. I've been against other people, other contractors. And the first question you asked was, why am I getting back in? One of the reasons is because of my basis in small business and economics. The other is I've done a lot of things in my life. I've been an author. I wrote children's books. I wrote adventure novels. I produced a television show for PBS. That's why I have homeworkwithbobfenwick.com on my van. That was the name of the show. And it branded pretty well. So I've done a lot of different things. I got into politics because I just was not satisfied with the answers I was getting from people. I figured at my age and with my experience, I don't like somebody playing with me. If I ask a straight question, I want a straight answer. I don't think we have that all the time in the city. I know, I'll give you an example about the bridges. We have seven, we had seven bridges that were classified as structurally deficient. That does not mean they're unsafe. That just means they have to have some work done on them. So it's been probably seven years that I've been trying to get those bridges fixed. One was fixed, that's Beta Bridge over by the university. The other one was over Dairy Road. Now, we had a contractor come in here and they put a pedestrian walkway right next to it, which was great. And they said they fixed the bridge. So I went under the bridge and looked at what was going on. It was jacklegged. I couldn't believe what I was seeing. What they basically did was jack up one end of the bridge and shim underneath it. They may have put some supporting plates under there and then did the same on the other side. And I asked them, is this all you're going to do? How long is this going to last? And they said, oh, maybe three to five years. When you fix a bridge properly, it should last 50 years. So we're in a situation where we're going to, what would have cost about $6 million seven years ago is now probably over $45 million, the bridges. That does make no sense whatsoever. We have small children that have to be educated. We need affordable housing stock built. And we can get into that because of the affordable housing issue. Really, what people are talking about are subsidized houses, units. So it's somebody who will get in there and give a straight answer and work very hard toward a specific goal. Not just say, sit on your show and promise you I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that. There are a lot of things we have to tackle. Housing, business, education, and really, the way the city government provides services. They also have to make sure the customers are satisfied. And that's been a little tougher thing than I thought it would be.
I like that answer. I like that answer a lot. Harris Tolber, let's make that a sizzle reel right there. Why I like that answer is that's an answer from an entrepreneurial mindset. That's an answer from someone who wants to take life by the cojones and make something out of it. That's someone who's used to dictating the pace and tempo. That's someone who's used to getting answers. That's someone who's used to saying, here's the problem. I'm going to be one of the folks that helps figure out the solution. In a lot of ways, that's the antithesis of local and state and federal government, where politicians are quick to raise attention to things-
And blame other people.
And blame other people and use bait-and-switch tactics.
Absolutely.
And one of those bait-and-switch tactics that could be happening right now is perhaps the affordable housing crisis that we have in Charlottesville, Virginia, where the, perhaps the interim city manager, perhaps the councillors that we have on council right now are saying, we have a budget deficit and we need to raise real estate, lodging, and meals taxes because we have to solve this affordable housing crisis. But guess what? That money, that dinero, that jack, that coin, that loot may not go to affordable housing after all. It may go into a slush fund that is earmarked for other things.
It goes into the general fund.
The general fund. Talk to me about that, Bob Fenwick.
That's where one of the promises, there's two things working there. One is the money that they raise would go into the general fund, which then goes into almost anywhere. Or somebody will think they've solved the affordable housing situation by putting money into the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program. And that's down, that's like years two, three, four, and five.
Of course.
And they're just kicking the can down the road.
Right.
Because that CIP can be changed every single year, and it is changed every single year. So that's what I think I can add to the council now. Somebody who knows the ins and outs. When I was on before and I started, I had the experience, and I didn't want to be fighting over committee assignments. So I said, y'all take what you want and give me the worst ones, because I think I can do a good job there. This time, I'm ready to go. I know which ones are a little more important than others. But it's still, the energy and the integrity that you bring to the job is probably the most important thing.
I like you. I like you already. Ray Kadel says, as he knows, I'm generally a fan of Bob Fenwick's work and positions. Plus, Bob Fenwick is a nice, down-to-earth guy. That's from Ray Kadel here.
I love Ray, yeah.
Yeah, he's giving you some props, guys. If you could like and share the stream, that would mean the world to us. If you have a question or comment to Bob Fenwick, put it in one of the seven Facebook channels that you're watching, and we're happy to relay it to Bob. Let me throw this to you. This must have been a tough situation for you. Charlottesville, and I can say this very safely. Charlottesville is a democratic stranglehold city. The last independent, the last non-Democrat to win a seat on council was Rob, was Mayor Walker. She won as an independent. Previous to that was Rob Schilling. Mayor Walker won in a very unique time, post-812, where a lot of things aligned strategically for her to win. Rob Schilling won at a time that perhaps was more the indicator of someone that was not from the Democratic Party being able to win because we didn't have a catastrophic event like August 12th. Here's where I'm going with this. Bob Fenwick, you initially tried to win as an independent. You realized very quickly, winning a spot on council as an independent was an uphill battle. Then you made an entrepreneurial pivot. You assessed the marketplace, and you chose to pivot the model. And then you chose to run as a Democrat. Talk to me about that thinking, how difficult it was, what the strategy was when you made that move.
All right. Well, I am not still a, really, a political person. So the boys had left home. We have, I have two sons, both of them who went to school in Charlottesville from probably kindergarten up through high school.
Charlottesville High School?
Charlottesville High School.
Okay.
And, well, let me, you say it's a tough situation. It really isn't a tough situation. If you approach this thing in a way that brings to bear your experience, what you know the people are looking for, and this is not just ordinary types walking around town. The people we have in Charlottesville have a wealth of talent. They have been in radio, they've been in construction, they've been in management, education, medicine. We have some really stellar individuals here. We have people who are struggling to get up to that level. So it's understanding that as a politician, you don't come into this thing figuring you have all the answers.
Sure.
You always have to be talking to the people on the street, basically. And you'll be, I was continually surprised. I keep learning things that at my age I really should know. Maybe I approach like insurance a little different than other people who might be working for a company. And to them, it's just part of the job. It's part of the compensation package.
Sure.
To me, it's another expense that I have to take care of. So it's that kind of, you get into the weeds almost. And you also sort of hit upon the, what some people call the angst. The political, we really don't know what to make of our politicians. You will invite people into your living room, and you'll ask them specific questions. How are you on neighborhood protection? Do you think neighborhoods should be protected? And the answer you get would be, oh, yeah. It's very important. It's a critical part of the allure of Charlottesville. We want people to come here. We want them to raise their families or retire here, whatever. And as soon as they're done with that interview or if they get elected, all of a sudden, they seem to forget this. And that's what I'm saying about you're dealing with people who have been there, done that. One of the things that I did in my early years, I was in the Army, and I was the executive officer of a garrison down in Panama. That's like an assistant city manager. So I understand dealing with people, dealing with the services you have to deliver. You can't always, maybe something will break down and you have to do an emergency repair. But it has to be an orderly approach to everything that goes on in that city. In that case, in that garrison, that Army garrison. And the same thing happens to the city. This is not a perfect city. It doesn't run perfectly. But it can run a whole lot better than we've been doing. And when they talk budgets, the first thing, I was on four budgets. And if I start going off, Jerry, you-
No, keep going. The show's yours. I love it. I'm learning from you.
I was intimately involved in four budgets. The first budget, I announced, I want to, I'm going to approach this as a people's budget. I thought the people were just as critical as the buildings and the roads and all of that, and that we were shortchanging them. The first three budgets, I voted no on. And that was in the face of threats that we'd lose our AAA bond rating. And the city would fall into the ocean or something like that. It didn't happen. The city thrived. But nobody ever talked about savings. They always, the word that always came up was taxes.
Sure.
Where do we get more money? Which is promised to a certain issue like housing or schools or something. But like I said, goes into the general fund-
It's bait and switch.
And goes anywhere.
Smoke and mirrors.
Yeah.
That's the kind of stuff that I hate. I'm going to hate that.
Yeah.
It goes against everything I stand for as a business owner. I'm the owner of an advertising agency. You walked into an advertising agency here. And four to eight times a day, I spend 45 minutes to an hour meeting with business owners. And these could be startups. These could be businesses that are doing $1 million a year. These could be businesses that are doing $5 million a year. These could be businesses that are doing $15 to $20 million a year. Okay? And these businesses come to me and they say, Jerry, you have purchasing power and you know the branding and advertising side better than anybody else. We're going to trust you with our advertising dollars. Go get me return on investment. And Jerry, I will continue to be your client at your advertising agency as long as you deliver me profits. And as soon as you stop delivering me profits, guess what's going to happen? They're going to leave. Okay? And I understand that. And that's how it should work. They hold me accountable. And I love that pressure. I get up, that pressure motivates the hell out of me. Okay? And where I'm going with that is, if I, in my business, told my clients that I'm going to take these dollars and do this with it, and then I end up doing something completely different with it, I would have to answer to those people. That's why I'm irritated when I hear, you know, local government say that this money, this $6 million deficit that we have for fiscal year 2020, that this budget, that we're going to potentially raise the meals, the lodging, or the real estate taxes, and we're going to use that money to help people that are our most impoverished citizens that can't afford to live in the city of Charlottesville that are making 30% or below area median income. What they are doing is they are exploiting the folks that don't have the voices for their personal interests. And that irritates the hell out of me.
Right. And once in Charlottesville with the city council, once you're in, you're in for four years. So it's tough to pull that back on somebody who really turns their back on you. And you mentioned you'd have to satisfy your customers. It's not just the customers, it's the people around those customers. Because people will come to me all the time and say, hey, you know, I need this, I need that, I need an attorney. Where do I go to buy building materials? And you give the name of somebody that you can trust and that delivers the goods for you. Insurance. Where can I get a good deal on insurance? It's that kind of a thing where it's you facing your customers, but it's also the people around your customers. And if you lose one customer, you'll play hell getting that customer back. It might take you four or five years.
Not only do you risk losing the customer, but you risk that customer telling another customer that could be potentially your customer a few, you know, two weeks later, two months later.
Yes.
The worst kind of advertising is negative word-of-mouth advertising. The best kind of advertising is word-of-mouth positive advertising. And that's what we understand. Look at what we're doing here with a talk show, featuring the best of Charlottesville, Virginia, folks like you. You clearly have an entrepreneur and small business mindset. I got a question coming in from Ray. Okay? I'm going to read that question to you. I think it's a good question. He says, Bob Fenwick, are councillors able to accept contributions that do not necessarily show up in the Democratic Party's advertising campaign with the contributor's name on it? He says, I fought this battle last cycle. Surely, I can support an individual candidate who happens to be a Democrat without advertising that I support all Democrats running. So he's looking for some anonymity for the support that he's doing, perhaps.
Yeah, and bring me back, because there's two parts to this. The answer to that is yes. If it's $100 or less, it can be a cash contribution. And I'm just now getting back into the financial part of this. It may be that you can also do a check. But the magic number is $100 or less. Some people say everything should be up and above board. And I agree with that. You want to know who's behind the candidate. And really, we're talking about promises that candidates make. It's the ones that are bought and paid for that are probably the ones going to be kept. So, but there are instances, and I'll give you an example. A husband and wife. The husband loves me. The wife thinks I'm a skunk. And he wants to support me, but he doesn't want his wife to find out. So that's why they have that $100 or less. You can still support somebody. It can be anonymous. You don't have to have your friends make fun of you because you're supporting a Democrat or, you know, a construction guy or whatever the reason is. But it's important, I think, to keep track of where the money is and whose favor, who's to and you're dancing to.
Good answer. Like and share the feed, guys. Whatever Facebook page you're watching, give us a like. Give us a share if you're so inclined. We put a lot of effort into it, and all I ask in return is a like and share of this feed. Bob Fenwick in the spotlight right here. Here's a tough question for you, Bob Fenwick. 2019 Charlottesville City Councillors, what kind of grade do you give our 2019 Charlottesville City Councillors post-August 12th?
Well, as a group, they're not doing too well. The issues are basically the same. They seem to have personality conflicts. And that's human nature. You have that everywhere. You go into a hospital, they have personality conflicts. You go into school, you go into churches.
They don't have to get along.
No, they don't have to, well, they, they, they don't.
They just have to communicate.
Yes. And they have to keep the, it's not me and you.
Right.
It's, it's, we're doing something different here.
Totality, macro.
Why are we doing this?
Totally get it.
Uh, your show's doing it to educate people.
Right, exactly.
So, you know, we might fuss at each other, or whatever.
But we can agree to disagree respectfully.
But we're both putting something out to the public to educate people.
You get it, yes.
And that's what, that's where the, where the problem is. Um, I've been around long enough that I think, uh, I can, I can maneuver through that. I did before. I was always ready to compromise. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, uh, in the situation I was in. But I understand about compromise, I understand about incremental improvement. If you don't get the whole ball of wax today, get it started. Then come back in a year, a year and a half. I mean, you know, most of us are gonna still be here. Uh, we don't have to get everything all at once, and you don't have to get your feelings hurt if you don't get what you want. So it's how you get along with people. It's, it's how, it's what you think about where you're going. I believe in the things that I say I will support. Neighborhood improvement, neighborhood protection. I'd like to change neighborhood development services, which is one of the city departments, to neighborhood protection services. Um, that would be only a start, but, uh, that would give people some idea, um, where the heart is of the city. Uh, we have, we have, we're probably on the downside of the biggest building boom the city has ever seen.
Interesting.
Um.
You see a recession on the horizon?
I do.
You see a recession on the horizon? Tell me why.
Well, because I've gone through probably six or seven of them.
Of course you have, especially in the construction industry.
Yeah, and, and it was up and down. It was almost like clockwork. After four years, something would happen. It was a Russian ruble.
Uh huh.
It was a stamp, uh, scandal in the federal legislature. Um, the, um, the, the nineteen eighty, what was that? The, the, we ran out of gas. You had gas lines. Um, and on odd days you could fill up, on even days, other people would fill up. It was that kinda thing.
Yeah. Two thousand eight, two thousand nine, the housing crisis tied with, uh, the price of fuel being astronomical.
Yeah. And, and, and all the safeguards that supposedly were in the housing market, were not really there.
Sure.
And so, so this has been the longest boom that, that I've seen in my lifetime.
Probably what, nine years and change?
Yeah. And, um, um, it, you have to be careful on the federal level when you start passing out tax breaks, which don't really trickle down to the small person.
Okay, let me play devil's advocate with you. Then maybe, um, this is devil's advocate for the sake of the show, because I think you can already get a feel for my politics, and what I stand for as a small business owner. Um, devil's advocate for the sake of the program. Perhaps interim city manager Mike Murphy is thinking about raising, uh, taxes, real estate, meals, and lodging, because he also sees, um, a recession on the horizon. And as a result of seeing a recession on the horizon, he would like to have the coffers, um, filled with cash to help combat the recession that could be lurking around the corner. Your thoughts, Bob Fenwick?
Well, if that's the case, be honest. You know, we're adults. We've all gone through this before. We don't need to be coddled. I mean, you know, all of us have had bad news in our life.
The problem is, is it's much easier. Here's a good example. In advertising, one of the strategies we leverage in advertising is, is a strategy called mom fear. Where we leverage motherhood and mom fear to get our clients' messages, products, services, whatever it may be, purchased. Um, you know, my wife is mama bear protective of our son, and of, of, of the den that we call our house. Okay? Um, where perhaps me, I'm a little more of a risk taker. And in leveraging mom fear, you're going after a feeling of the heart. A great example of this is Zika. Zika, when the Zika virus was prevalent, that was more a scare tactic, as opposed to a reality itself. But Zika was everywhere, on everybody's lips, because of mom fear. Okay? Where I'm going with this is with the raising taxes. If you're able to tie it to something that's tangible, like affordable housing, which is on every media outlet's front page, every talk show host, every six PM and eleven, eleven PM newscast, front and center of their broadcasts, then you are able to quantify or put a face to tax increases, as opposed to, down the road, there may be a recession. We don't know if it's gonna be a recession or not, but we gotta keep our coffers filled with cash to help potentially rebuttal or fight against this recession, whether or not we know it could happen or not.
Yeah. Well, I mean, whether it's mom fear, or dad fear, or, or anything like that, once again, I think we can take honest, an honest, honest discourse. I believe that. Um, there's another point that I was gonna make, but it just flipped.
Well, let me throw this to you. Um, why, look at the city council race here. The city council race, there are a lot of people in. And the word I'm hearing from city hall is, we got a, a new candidate about to jump in the mix within the next week or so. And this new candidate, we'll call him Candidate X. And Candidate X has a big-time, high-profile that I'm being told is really going to change the landscape and the complexion of this race. We also have a gentleman by the name of Don Gatheres, who I have tremendous respect for, that's on the disabled list. I'm a sports guy. He's on the DL with a heart condition. If the heart condition is solved, this guy jumps back in the race. Don Gatheres has a high profile, and this guy could really influence this race. Talk to me about the 2019 Charlottesville city council race and the level of competition that you're seeing as someone who's been on council before.
All right, well, I've been in a lot of, I, I, I enjoy sports, and I'm competitive in business, but I'm also competitive in sports. I have been in situations where she, where our team shows up for a game, and everybody's saying, you guys are gonna get whipped. Look at those guys, they got better uniforms, they're bigger, they talk louder, but you gotta play the game. And so, you know, whoever's gonna jump in, that's fine, they can jump in. Let me go back to one thing, though.
Sure.
And it, and it's about the candidates, uh, where are the Republicans? Why don't they run a ca-? I have always thought.
Well, they can't win in this town.
No, but that's beside the point.
Okay.
But you get a young guy, a young woman, uh, who's very articulate.
Sure.
And can, can argue and convince people.
Well, that's me, keep going.
All right, there you go. And, um, and run them anyway. It's good for business, it's good for the discourse, it's good for the city. What, you know, they, the city should be able to defend raising taxes all the time. Um, the city should be able to defend, when we promise to put money into affordable housing, that it goes to that, and not into the general fund. So, it's, it's, it's a better discussion, uh, so I, you know, anybody that wants to get in, that's fine. I, I encourage people to get in.
Well, why are you running as a Democrat, though?
Well, because that's what I believe. I was raised Roman Catholic. So we loved JFK. I had a background in democracy, the happy warrior, Hubert Humphrey. Um, these are the people that I grew up in my family, they loved them, um, and that's.
JFK, a conservative Democrat, if you may.
Yeah. He lowered taxes. Yes, and it, and it worked. So, um, this political thing sometimes can flip either way. But the, but the whole point is, to be honest, and to be truthful, and not to be afraid to tell people if they're going down the wrong path. Like, don't be expecting to see affordable housing next year, uh, when we have bridges to fix, or this and that. Um, we'll get it, but it, it's like a balance. We have to balance everything.
I like that answer. Turn that into a sizzle reel. You like that answer too, Tolber? Uh, why don't we do this? Harris Tolber is a proud Western Amherst graduate, grew up in Croze, went to James Madison University. I'll give you a couple minutes to think of a question, Harris Tolber, then you jump in the mix with a question, sir. Um, I'm gonna ask a couple here for, uh, Bob Fenwick here. How do you leverage your past experience on council to potentially help you win this race?
Well, um, I went into this, um, with certain precondition, not really preconditions, but there's some things I didn't like. I didn't like all the money in politics. I didn't like somebody being able to drop a couple thousand dollars. There, we had a race, uh, a couple years ago, that cost ninety thousand dollars for one of the candidates.
You're talking Mike Signers?
No.
Which one are you talking?
Well, I don't wanna mention a name because.
Was it a city council race?
It wasn't city council, but it was a city elected position.
Okay, all right.
Um, that's, that's pretty expensive for a, a city, where we should know most people. Most people should know us. We should be able to walk around and see, if not everybody, the majority of people. Uh, so, on, on the last race, uh, sometimes I get a little stubborn, and I said, okay, I'm not gonna raise a lot of money. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, instead of raise money, I'm gonna walk my shoes off, and talk to people, and go to churches, go to neighborhood associations, and just go to as many people as I could, because that's why you raise money.
Sure.
Is to get votes. Um, so, my competitors raised forty, fifty thousand dollars, I raised.
Signer was at fifty and change?
I know.
Yeah. What'd you raise?
And big change.
Big money?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, Signer had plans of being potentially the governor. The guy had one time ran for lieutenant governor. The guy looked the part, was young, was buttoned up. His handling, and, and I'm not knocking the guy, okay? I'm just being realistic and straightforward. His handling of A-12 left a lot to be desired. And as a result, if I'm a betting man, and I'm an entrepreneur, so of course I'm a betting man, I would bet that this guy's not gonna run again. Um, I think Kathy Galvin, and I put this on Twitter, and in fact, we're gonna have Kathy Galvin on the show later this week. I think Kathy Galvin's gonna chase David Toscano's seat. And I think Kathy Galvin is gonna give Sally Field, Sally Hudson, a, a general, a push. I think Sally Hudson really jumped out of the gates strong, built a lot of momentum, has cornered a lot of the voter base, and has a lot of momentum on her side. But Kathy's a wily one. I think she's a wily one. So time will tell with Kathy. Talk to me a little bit here, anywhere you wanna go.
Uh, let's see, um... Well, you gotta give me a little push here.
How about your platform, your tenants? And Tolber, we'll get you in the mix.
Let me talk about that, and you'll sort of see why I really don't consider myself. I understand I'm a politician, but I just don't like that word.
Uh huh.
Uh, the theory is, when you run for office, you pick out three issues.
Uh huh.
And they're called your elevator speech.
Okay.
And so what, somebody says on the street, what do you stand for? You can give them this. Affordable housing, um, um, pre-K education, uh, balanced budget, whatever. I boiled mine down to one word.
Okay.
And that's representative.
Okay.
That's the job that I'm running for. Uh, I would represent Jerry Miller, I'd represent, um, anybody else in town. I know the small business part, I know the education part, because my boys went to school here. Uh, I know the arts part, because I've written novels, I've produced television shows. We even did a little movie on the downtown mall.
Uh huh.
Um, there's, my background in the army was as a, um, assistant city manager, basically. Uh, the XO of a garrison command. So I know about people, and I know about departments, and, and budgets, and that thing, what you have to know. Uh, and there's another part, I served in Vietnam, and, and I know life can be very, very, um, bad sometimes. Uh, and you have to know how to manage that, not just for people around you, but maybe in your own personal life. Uh, somebody gets a very serious illness, or something like that, that affects everything. Um, your personal, your financial, everything. So, it's the breadth of experience that I think is very important. There's only one person running in this council race that has any experience in adding units to affordable housing.
Are you saying Lloyd Snook?
No, Bob.
You're saying?
Bob Fenwick.
Bob Fenwick? All right, I like that. Bringing a little swagger right there, Tolber. Let's give him a sizzle reel for that right there. Fenwick bringing the swagger. What do you think of your competition?
Well, let me tell you what I did first.
Please, I would love to.
Okay. Um, I love the city.
Okay, I know you do.
I love the old stuff in the city.
Okay.
Uh, when I was going to school at Georgetown, I'd, I'd visit friends down here, loved it. Um, and it was the, it was a small-town flavor that Charlottesville had, and still has to some extent, but it's, it's slipping away from us.
It is.
So I'd look at these old buildings, and I'd say, you know, I can do that. I, I can fix this thing up, and I can flip it. Right now, nobody's living there, it's abandoned. So I did that for a number of years. I'd buy the old houses, and I'd fix them up, and sell them. Um, and it added, families could move in there, it was no longer a hangout for people with drugs or whatever. It helped the families that moved in, it helped the neighborhood, uh, and it helped me, because I made a living like that for a while. So, um, I, you know, it's one thing to say, we wanna add, uh, five thousand units. You know, how do you get there? How do you do that in a city of twelve square miles?
Ten point two seven square miles.
Ten point two seven?
Yeah, ten point two seven.
I heard ten point two six, but I, we'll go with you.
Ten point two seven is the right answer.
Okay, all right.
I love it, I love it. So your campaign, and I love what you stand for, okay? I, I, you know, I'm not just blowing smoke up your, your, you know what. Okay? I love what you stand for, because you come at it from an entrepreneur, small business, transparency, honesty, ROI standpoint, return on investment. Because you understand, a dollar that goes out, dollar better turn into three dollars, or we're not doing something right.
Yeah. And your, and your word has to amount for something.
Yeah, and I love that, and I love that. And I love that the military background, I love what you stand for. Harris Tolber, why don't we get you in the mix? This is a director here. Um, this guy is Central Virginia born and raised, Western Amherst born and raised, James Madison University educated. Harris Tolber, the question for, uh, potential city council candidate Bob Fenwick, sir.
Mr. Fenwick, we appreciate having you on the show. And, um, I think that, you know, you were talking a little bit about how you have a love, first of all, you love sports, and you have a competitive mindset. Secondly, we appreciate your service in the military. And I was wondering if you could, could comment on how those two aspects of your background give you that cut? I mean, I would imagine it would give you a cutting edge in terms of really focusing in, and, um, not getting pushed around in terms of other people's opinions, and really just getting, getting done the job that, that you want to implement.
I love it, I love it. So his question is, background in military, team sports in military, how it helps you?
And, and, and trying to reach a goal.
Yes.
In sports, you gotta win.
Right.
Um, unless you're really getting beat up, and you're going into the playoffs already.
Good question.
Yeah, it is a good question. And I love it anyway, because it's James Madison. That's where my son went there.
All right.
And he loved it so much, he still goes back and sees his friend.
Awesome.
Uh, some people don't like going back to the school they went to. That's a beautiful school. Um, but it's the goal. It's the goal in sports, it's the goal in what I am trying to do. Um, to get young peo- to get young kids, I mean, pre-K, educated, give everybody a, a, a good start in life. And just because you don't have everything in the world, uh, you, you can still compete. Yeah, I used to take my boys around to the grocery store, and I'd show them the cereal boxes, because they had bright colors, they had big letters, and I taught them the alphabet that way. It's, it's getting these young kids, uh, interested in life, and, and making sure they feel loved and taken care of. Um, I understand some children don't have that benefit, but other people can, can do that for them. I had a little program a couple years ago at City Market, and it called, um, Rick Shaw. And, and everybody knows what a Rick Shaw is, but I split it, and I, I said Rick and Shaw, like a person's name. And the, and I got young kids from the projects, uh, and, and we brought them over, and they would carry people's grocery, groceries from the city market. Um, and they get, that's how they started earning money. Uh, the families would come over there. They, many times, showed up without having breakfast. Uh, and I would give them breakfast, their, 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 one of the parents would come, or maybe their grandparents would come with them to watch them. But it's, it's understanding that everybody in the city has a role to play. Not just in the talent part that I was looking at earlier, or talking about, but it's the children who see everybody growing up around him, uh, or her. When I grew up, I, I had margarine sandwiches. Um, I didn't have enough money to buy milk at school. And my mother would say, look, this other guy, I know he brings two sandwiches, get one off of him, because he's gonna throw the second one away. So I know what it means to really, um, not have what other children have. And as long as you have somebody that looks out for you, that you think you can be safe and secure with, I think that's critically important for these young people.
I love that. Let's sizzle reel that, baby, that was solid. Um, I'll, I'll relay a personal anecdote, and then I have a question from Herb Porter, from Fifeville. Herb Porter's big-time people, love you, Herb Porter. Um, I wanna get you on the show, Herb Porter. I mean that, anytime, sir. The show is yours, I wanna get you on here, Herb. I'll relay a personal anecdote. Um, coming out of UVA, got a job at The Daily Progress. Finished my career at The Daily Progress as the youngest editor in the history of The Daily Progress under Jerry Rakliff, the high school sports editor. This led to a syndicated radio show on five ESPN, or seven ESPN affiliates, that my show aired in three states. Two TV shows on NBC 29 that bared my name, was doing extremely well for someone in his mid-twenties, you know, clocking close to a hundred. Okay, in mid-twenties. So I was working eighty-five hours a week, I had no life. You know, I was losing girlfriends because of the work schedule, but I was doing well. And then in two thousand and eight, I chose to, I chose to, um, launch a business. In two thousand and eight, out of a condominium in the Villas at Southern Ridge, down Fifth Street Extended, okay? My parents, before I launched this business, I told them, I said, Mom and Dad, I'm thinking about going into business for myself, and sacrificing all this stuff that I had built. Within three and a half hours of that phone call, they got on sixty-four and sprinted to meet me, and talk me out of it, and basically have an intervention, saying, what the hell are you doing, Jerry? This is the dumbest thing that you have ever done. Literally said that to me. Okay? And I said, you know what, I'm stubborn, I'm young, and when people say that I can't do something, it motivates me even harder to do it. I started this business in two thousand and eight with thirty-two thousand dollars of life savings. In seven months, that thirty-two thousand dollars was gone, because I had zero clients. I went into the Panda Garden buffet across from Lambeth Commons at UVA on Emmett Street, and when they weren't looking, I had Ziploc bags that I was stealing food, taking it from my plate into Ziploc bags. And that was my food for three days, and my dog's food for three days. I was pulling up seat cushions, looking for a dollar three and change to go to McDonald's for a double cheeseburger, and that was my only meal of the day, because it was rich in protein. And eventually what happens, I did well by one client, that client told somebody else. I did well by that second client, who happened to be Andy McClure, one of the largest restaurateurs in Charlottesville.
Yeah.
And he did, told somebody else about it. Long story short, we have a pretty good thing going on now. Here's where I'm going with this, is I totally understand, from what you're saying, firsthand perspective, and how your firsthand perspective is influencing you to get back into the mix. You, um, you do not wanna step over dollars to pick up quarters. And a lot of times, council, with how they maintain infrastructure around our city, is stepping over dollars to pick up quarters. As opposed to spending the money on a bridge on Dairy Road, and making that bridge the best bridge it could ever be, that would last fifty years. They use the short-term solution, the Band-Aid solution. And as a result, we're left with a forty-million-dollar problem, that could have been a seven-million-dollar solution a handful of years ago.
Right.
I totally get where you're saying. Herb Porter has this question for you. He says, Bob Fenwick, with the continued influx of people to Charlottesville, Virginia, resulting in an increase of water demand, do you support dredging of the city-owned Charlottesville reservoir, along with Ragged Mountain Nature Area, and selling the nutrient-rich soil to farmers, or anyone that wants to purchase truckloads of the rich soil, to recoup some of the money spent for the dredging?
Herb Porter, I love you if you're listening.
He's listening, he's watching right now.
Oh, he's watching.
He's watching him right now.
Herb, you're a rascal. That, that's exactly what I try to do. In fact, some of the clips still could be on the website, um, but I'll probably have to put them back up there. And the answer to Herb's question, yes, absolutely. And I put it in, in, um, in this perspective. Um, people will be going up to Lowe's, and they'll be buying bags, cubic feet of topsoil. What they call topsoil, which you don't know what's in it, first of all, um, could be anything. And they'll be paying five or six bucks for this. And they'll be paying five or six bucks for this. Let me see, 33927, so 27 cubic feet is a cubic yard. So if you pay three bucks, you're getting close to 90 bucks if you have a cubic yard. There are, I believe this figure is correct, in that reservoir, because I could almost walk across it, it was so dry. There are, I think, 100 million cubic yards of the best topsoil in Virginia. That's what you dredge out of a reservoir. It's the farms around you and it's the topsoil that goes into the reservoir. That is a gold mine. That's like we have a oil well right in our midst. And if people are starting to look for money and they're talking about raising taxes, if they'd started talking about saving money and looking in some of an off place to earn money, I mean, that would be jobs, that would be an incredible asset that we could sell. We know what's in it, it's not like it's junk dirt or chopped up trees that have fallen over from rot, it's prime topsoil. Developers would like it, farmers would like it, people who have a garden would like it. It really is a win-win-win. I tried for three years and I'll be talking to Herb about this.
You can see him at Fuzzy's Tacos.
Oh, okay.
At Happy Hour. Herb Porter, come on the show, baby, come on, baby, keep talking to us.
So anyway, it's that kind of an entrepreneurial or thinking outside the box.
Exactly.
You don't have to, if somebody comes at you and says taxes, 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 I always try to say, where's the savings? Some people say, well, look, it's only a penny. Bob, it's a penny on a dollar, would you get off my case? But if I turn it around and say, let's give them a break, let's take a penny off the tax, it's as if the world is gonna end. They cannot stand that.
You know what, I'm using the sound machine for that. That's the first time we use that sound effect right there Harris Tolber. I just got serious manwood for you right now from that answer, okay? And why I love that answer is because you are thinking outside the box, you're a visionary, you're able to come up with solutions that are not tied to taxing the common man or the common woman who is already tight with their disposable income. Meals taxes, guys, are regressive taxes. They may in the short term generate more income, but they are gonna further gentrify this city and make it more difficult for our most impoverished citizens to enjoy the amenities that is Charlottesville, Virginia, which will drive our most impoverished citizens deeper and deeper into Central Virginia. It is a regressive solution. Another perfect example of this, and I'm fired up right now, and I'm fired up because you and I have a lot of common ground here. Another thing that I want to talk about with you is Keith Woodard's $80 million Water Street development.
Yeah.
In fact, I'm gonna read something that Lloyd Snook sent to me. And Lloyd Snook's your competition, but I think Lloyd Snook is a guy that has a lot of sensibility, okay? He's a guy that's been around the block. And I'm gonna read this to you and this is about the $80 million development that is Keith Woodard's property. I've tried to invite Keith Woodard, come on the program, baby, come on Keith Woodard. The property tax on a property valued at $80 million, which is admittedly not the same as a property that costs 80 million to build, the property taxes are 95 cents per $100. 95 cents per $100 translates to $760,000. Raising one penny on our property tax rate will generate about $700,000. As a result, if we build two $80 million projects, we don't need a tax hike at all. Talk to me.
Well, let me come at it from a different way. Because I would ask anybody, who pays that real estate increase, that real estate tax increase? It's not the developer.
No, we pass it down. I have a 5%, I own 40% of this building, I have 23 tenants in this building.
Yes.
I have positions outside of this building. I have a 5% escalator every single year in my lease. The 5% escalator every single year in my lease is to protect me from tax increases.
Yeah, and you have to pass those increases down to your tenants. And that's part of the affordable housing problem. You get these big buildings being put up, they give them a special use permit, which is a subsidy, which is basically a government subsidy. And they say, this extra revenue that's gonna come in because of this SUP, a special use permit, is gonna pay for affordable housing. But what in effect it's doing is, when the value of a big building goes up, it pops the value of everybody around them as soon as that sale is made. And the tenants that are around there, they immediately get that tax increase. So this, it's a false premise. There's other ways to go about it, this is an older city, we need to be refreshed, nobody say we shouldn't be developing things. But to promise the people of Charlottesville that everything's gonna be dandy because of the extra revenue, you better start looking at that a little closer. Because it affects everybody, especially the people who can least afford it. We always end up paying the taxes, always.
Harris Tolber, sizzle reel that, Bob Fenwick is in fuego right now. You were like three for four, hitting for the cycle right around the corner, batting in the four hole, making stuff happen for your baseball team right now. I need to throw this to you.
Yeah.
Okay? What do you do with the Landmark Hotel?
Uh...
We have a, we have a...
The Dewberry?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a developer, I'll throw it to you, we have a developer.
Okay.
Who Bloomberg News has dubbed the emperor of empty lots. I dubbed him on this program as the extorting emperor of empty lots. This guy allows properties to go in their most ramshackle form with essentially the thought that once they're ramshackled and hideous to the skyline and to the heartbeat of the city, because he targets premium lots and premium properties wherever he's doing this, once they're in their most ramshackle form, he then can extort City Hall to give them obscene tax breaks and that's when he chooses to build.
He might build.
Might build.
Yes.
Dirty tactic.
Yes.
Talk to me about it.
Yeah, okay, well, let me do a couple of things and you're gonna have to keep me under control here.
Okay.
Because I'm gonna go all over the place.
Please go all over the place.
Alright, first of all, that building is getting dangerous. We've already seen things being blown off that are a risk to anybody, the restaurants around there, the mall, whatever. That building is getting dangerous, it's been open to the elements for five years, six years, it's a reinforced concrete building. Those buildings, if you don't finish them and keep the rain and the temperature controlled and all that, the rebar rusts and deteriorates, the joint between the column and the floor always cracks, it always opens up and the rain gets in there. That building could be uninhabitable at this point.
I think it is.
Yeah, and the key is, if Dewberry ever did anything about that, he would have to get a structural engineer to certify that building was safe. Now, what happens in business, and you know this, you can buy a, you can find somebody who will, for $30,000, $40,000, give you a certificate of whatever, that it's sufficient for people to move in there. But when that came up before, when I first got on council, I said, the city should hire an independent structural engineer and do our own inspection. And if my, if I think, if I'm correct, that's gonna markedly, it's gonna make a big difference on Dewberry. But having said that, Dewberry has had all the chances he's gonna have, I think. There was an individual who stood in front of the Dewberry and said, in my four years here, I'm gonna get that taken care of.
Mike Signer, Mike Signer.
Nothing has happened on that. And once you start talking about the Dillon Rule, you start talking about a lawsuit, I say, that's fine and dandy. Once again, we're adults, we know how these things work. So I would propose to the council that we immediately start some kind of condemnation proceeding. Because something is not right here. I hope it's not a health situation.
It's not a health situation, his track record...
I mean, his personal health.
Well, no, but his track record would show it's not a health situation. Past precedent is indication that this is his strategy, his tactic of doing business.
Well, that makes no sense to me. I mean, so you keep putting this thing off until you're 80 years old?
Well, he's paying, and I had Rory Stolzenberg, planning commissioner, on the program. And he's paying roughly $65,000, $67,000 a year in taxes on that. $67,000 a year in taxes sounds like a lot of money to you, me, and everybody who's watching, but $67,000 to Johnny Dewberry is not that much money. It's a drop in the bucket for him.
Yeah, but he's, so he's being very clever, because we talked about recessions before. He's gonna fiddle with this thing until we're deep into a recession, which markedly deteriorates the value of that property to him. So, I mean, they play this game and if they're careful, they want us to take the risk, and if they're not careful, they get stuck with a property that really hasn't gone up in value in 10 years.
The city of Charlottesville has already helped subsidize a downtown hotel in the Omni.
Yeah.
Are we expected to subsidize another hotel in the downtown mall just because it's the crown jewel, these eight blocks of a 10.27 mile municipality?
Well, if we can dress it up and make it look like the emperor, probably that might happen. But the emperor has no clothes, everybody knows that. I mean, if a visitor comes into Charlottesville and looks at that building, it's like any other building under construction. If you're here for three, four, five years, it becomes not a piece of construction, it becomes a...
Part of the skyline.
Yeah, it's...
And that's, you think that's where we're at?
I think that's where we are now. It just doesn't reflect well on the city when you combine it with these bridges that you look at when you first come into the city. You have a business, you're coming down here, or you want your child to go to UVA or PBCC or whatever, you want to see a pretty city, you want to see a beautiful city that is under control. You see rusty bridges, you see a building in the heart of our city that's sitting there with raggedy plywood all over the place. It's just not good, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, what's the solution?
The solution is to get in there and talk truth and say, if you're gonna, if you care about this city and you care about affordable housing, which is taking the hit anyway because we're, you know, we're kinda floundering around here, make it a beautiful city, make it a city where you want your family to live in, that you can have opportunities, and that helps everybody.
But this guy doesn't care about the city of Charlottesville, he's from Atlanta.
You're right.
Yeah, and he doesn't care about, here's a perfect example. Lee Danielson and Halsley Minor and Keith Woodard and Ludwig Kootner and Oliver Kootner and, you know, the RIP Gabe Silverman, rest in peace Gabe. These people have ties to the city of Charlottesville. These people walk around the city of Charlottesville, these people would be seen... Meutrich Kootner lives on the third floor of this building, I see her all the time. Johnny Dewberry, and I'm calling him Johnny to help, you know what I'm doing.
Yeah.
Johnny Dewberry's got no ties to the city. He could care less if 50,000 people in the city of Charlottesville or quarter million people in Central Virginia don't care about him.
That's why we've gotta hit them where it hurts.
And where is it?
And that's a lawsuit, that's legal. We'd have to do that anyway. If he came, if he gets, if he sent us a letter tomorrow and said, I'm sorry, this is not working out, we'd have to do something then. If we start the process of either condensate, what am I looking for, condemnation?
Yeah, condemning the building.
Condemning the building.
Yeah.
Or giving him an offer and using that building for another purpose. You know, I would like to get a group of business people, including some of the developers, together and give us an option, what we can do. But while we are discussing that, I would have already filed the lawsuit for condemnation. And you can, you know, the Dillon Rule will be damned. We, our first loyalty is not to Dewberry, our first loyalty is to Charlottesville.
Amen, brother.
And that's how we should approach all of this.
Amen, brother, let's sizzle reel that Tolber, let's sizzle reel that. Alright, well, then this is a perfect segue into Mayor Walker's comments in the front page of the Sunday edition of the New York Times. This was a handful of months ago. And Mayor Walker, who's the mayor of the city of Charlottesville, she said, and I'm paraphrasing, that the city of Charlottesville is an ugly-to-the-soul kind of place. The world's newspaper is the New York Times.
Yeah.
Okay? Here's the question for you. Does the mayor of Charlottesville and city councillors in general, do they have a responsibility to the city in totality? The city from a macro standpoint? Or do they have a responsibility to the city in a micro demographic? Tough question for you, Bob Fenwick.
Well, not really. Everybody speaks for themselves, Jerry.
Okay.
I mean, you have your opinion, I have my opinion.
Sure.
If somebody gives me a bad opinion about me, I'm gonna do something about it unless I think they're whacked out. So to me, it's helpful, it's helpful criticism. And really, in a way, that could really help the city. Because if we get everything under control and we start being honest and we start giving good solutions to the problems, we can then say, look, five years ago, we were a mess, look what we've done. The neighborhoods are in better shape, the businesses are in better shape, they're never looking over their shoulder for a tax increase, the children are happy, and we might get into schools, I don't know, but I've gone to the schools and what I look for is when the bell rings in the afternoon, those children explode out of that school. They're laughing, they're dancing, they're afraid, they're sad to see their friends get on the bus and be parted till the next day. It's the future of our city and that's what we have to do. A couple of years ago, maybe last year or the year before, I had a program called Charlottesville Sparkles.
Mm-hmm.
And it was like a spring cleaning for the city.
Uh-huh.
And that was the whole point, is we were coming out of winter, everything's dreary and dirty, let's sparkle it up. When people come down here to pick their kids up from college or watch the baseball game, UVA team, whatever it is, or they're looking even to bring their business down here, they see a city where people are busy at work taking care of the city. Not just taking care of their families or their businesses, but volunteering to take care of the city as well. And a lot of people jumped in, the sororities and fraternities over at UVA did, the kids did. I haven't had enough time this year to do, I'd love to do it again. We'll see if I can make that happen.
Herb Porter's giving you some props. Herb Porter says, great answer, Bob Fenwick.
I love Herb, yeah.
Yeah, Herb's a good dude. Tell me about Herb Porter.
Don't eat all the tacos, Herb.
Don't eat all the tacos, Herb Porter, he's watching right now. Why do you like Herb Porter?
Herb, because he speaks his mind, he speaks truth to power. You can't give Herb a bunch of baloney and expect to get away with it. And that's what I admire about him, there's a lot of people in town like that. Mayor Walker can say whatever she wants, she comes from a different background than I do. But one thing, when Nakia Walker says something, she's thinking about the city.
Yeah, she brings it.
She's not thinking about her ambition.
Right, that's fair.
There are people who are saying things just to get to the next highest political office or to get a job at UVA or something like that, so...
Who are you alluding to?
People.
Bob Fenwick.
Okay, look, we got one problem, I don't want two problems.
I know, I know. I gotta ask you, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask you. Talk to me about statues and what you can or cannot say, because I know there's an active lawsuit there.
Well, I mean, the lawsuit is public, everything is public, so I can say whatever I want. You know, sometimes I get in trouble because, but that's too bad. It's a flawed law. The state legislature knew it was a flawed law, they tried to fix it and the governor vetoed their effort. The court has said at least twice, it is unsettled law. So it is flawed, it is unsettled, there's a court down in Danville, it's a circuit court, so it's of equal value as our court, our circuit court. They dispose of basically the same issue in a matter of months or maybe weeks. And it was, one of the biggest things was retroactivity. Does the law that's on the books refer to statues that were put up prior to whatever the date was, '69 or something like that? And the judge down there said, no. And he also said, it's really unsettled law. So when I approached the statues, there were many things that I looked at. First of all, my job was to represent, my job was not to adjudicate. So I told everybody, here's what I'm gonna do, this thing has to get into the court as quickly as possible because we have a problem here with the law. And meanwhile, we should get something from it. And that's where it stands now, it's just taken too long, but sometimes it happens, but it will be taken care of.
Did you get them out of the parks?
Yeah, I'd still vote to get them, those are statues, those are sculptures, they should be in a museum.
I agree.
You know?
Okay, here's how it was at first, and I'm gonna throw it to you. At first I was like, you know, when Dr. Bellamy brought, I think it's his niece, when Dr. Bellamy brought his niece into Lee Park over here on Market Street and explained how the statues were impacting folks, I initially was of the mindset, removing these statues from the parks is not going to change history.
Right.
Okay? Initially, I was of that mindset. And then what happened was, you know, I was here for A-12 against, you know, against the wishes of my family, I chose to come here. Why I chose to come here was because I knew that my son or daughter, you know, I only have a son, was not born at the time, but still understood that this was gonna be history and in history books. And I wanted to be able to share my firsthand perspective of being there. This is what I saw, son or daughter, my son's name is Trey. I also have a lot of skin in the game here with ownership in this building and the stuff happened right there.
Yeah.
Okay? So I was, two fronts of why I saw it. I saw evil and sin that I'd never seen in my entire life, I've never been in a military service setting like you, okay? So I'd seen evil and sin and brutality and ugliness and just terrible stuff. I'm a God-fearing person.
I saw military too, yeah, you're right.
Right, you have deeper perspective than I do when it comes to this particular aspect, okay? That was the deepest I had ever gone from a sin standpoint and an evil standpoint was A-12. And where I'm going with this is, once I saw that and how these inanimate objects could elicit this kind of sinful emotion, I said, something has to be done. And we are humans. And the difference between humans and say like chimpanzees and say like apes is we're able to evolve our thinking. We're able to have one mindset today and we're able to change our mindset the next day, because we have been blessed with a brain that allows us to change our thought process. And my thought process has evolved. And my thought process is, if these inanimate objects can take, can make people feel these things, and can cause this kind of reaction, let's get them the hell out of the public parks, where people should be able to use these public spaces in a small 10.27-mile city, and they should be able to go to these grassy fields, and they should be able to enjoy them, and have fun, and do whatever they want, as opposed to feeling negativity or having these PTSD-type thoughts from A-12.
Yep.
So I say, "Put them in the museums."
Yeah. If it rains, people can see them. If it snows, people can see them, they can go there at night. Doesn't have to be in our public square. But let me throw a few things real quick. Our founding documents say, "It starts in order to form a more perfect union." We're on a trip. We're on a, on a journey here. You know, some of the things we did in the past, we would never think of doing today. So we do have this forward-looking basis for our country, and I love it that way. But if somebody wants to see what I thought about August 12, they can go to august12.space, S-P-A-C-E, august12.space. I took video down there, and as that was happening, I remember one of the thoughts I distinctly had was, "This is an insurrection. This is incredible. People walking, walking up our streets with loaded weapons."
Right.
Not just, not just-
Assault rifles.
With bump stocks.
Yeah.
With shotguns.
Right. Not handguns.
Yes, and we would ask them, "Why the shotgun? Why do you do that?" And the answer was, "They're the best weapon to clear a street."
Right.
And that was chilling.
That was chilling.
Yes.
I remember looking at some of the guys that were with assault rifles, I'm talking, and I am a man that believes in the right to bear arms, within reason.
Yeah.
Within reason, okay? And that's a conversation for another day, we don't have to go down that road. But I remember walking from ACAC, I was at ACAC, I'm a big-time racquetball player, I liked, I was playing racquetball, and then I came over here and I walked over, I left my car at the ACAC parking lot. And I remember walking over here, and I remember seeing these militias. I think they were, militia's the right term, right?
Yeah.
Okay, these militias, that had these like, and I don't even know the acronyms for the guns, 'cause I'm not a gun guy.
Yeah.
Okay? Machine guns.
M16, yeah.
M16, okay. And I remember staring at them, okay? 'Cause I had never seen them before. You have, okay?
Yeah.
And I remember staring them like, like a, like a kid on Christmas, like, you know, almost terrified.
Yeah.
And I was looking at them, and I was like, one of them looked at me and said, "What are you looking at?" And I took a step back.
Yeah.
Okay? And I was like, I felt unsafe in my city.
Yeah.
And, and, and I can't even imagine, I can't even imagine what someone that is African-American was feeling at the time.
Right.
Okay? I am a white guy, and if a white guy is feeling terrified just by that, I can't even imagine what an African-American is feeling. And I don't, I don't wanna profess to say that I know, but I do know from my firsthand perspective, if I'm seeing that, and I'm feeling that, and I'm seeing this evil and this sin, that these things need to go away to a museum.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll give you a little story about what, how I was affected. I led the invasion into Cambodia, I had 180 combat engineers under my command, and we led a reinforced infantry brigade into Cambodia. And I saw things that I didn't, that I wished I had not remembered on August 12. It's, it's that kind of a, well, it's just, it's terrible. So when I came back, I didn't think I was any different. And I heard PTSD, a post-traumatic stress disorder. I really didn't believe it. I thought some people were using PTSD as an excuse for not getting off their butts and working, you know, it was that kind of thing. I didn't think it applied to me until my wife told me one day, "You know, I think the Russians sent a body double over here, I think you're a Russian." And it stunned me. And, and, and what she was saying was, "You're not the same person now that you were when you left." And it started me thinking, through the years, I kind of, okay, I'm me, I gotta, you know, you just go on with your life. When I saw what was going on on August 12, I had friends that after, by that evening or the next day or week, they had this blank look on their face. They were looking at trashcans to see if anybody had left a backpack up against a trashcan. Might be a bomb. They were, and we had alt-right people coming back, they were on the corner down on the mall. I would take video of them until they ran. But they were here, they were still checking us out, and it took, and we are still not over-
No.
What, what happened down there.
Right.
And part of the reason is, everybody left town, except for Jason Kessler, and we had to go after them, we got a lot, we got a bunch of them, and they're in jail, and that's fine. But we never really had somebody who was responsible for all that face accountability. We started blaming our own people. We started blaming the young people, the alt, the Antifa, the Black Lives Matter, Serge. Those young kids did a marvelous job, not just as medics, but helping people downtown. They would go down behind these militia and mock them with signs that I could not repeat the words that were on there on your show.
Sure, right, well, you could, but, yeah, you're a man of, you're a God-fearing man, but you don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but we are still suffering from that. We ran two black men out of town, Maurice Jones and Al Thomas. I remember thinking about 11:20 that morning, as they were being pushed out of Lee Park, or whatever it's called now. We won this thing, this incredible event, we won this. And of course, that was before Heather Heyer was killed. But, and we had somebody who was pounding on the door of the Tactical Operations Center, that's what I call it, saying, "Let me in." And Maurice Jones and Al Thomas had enough sense not to let that individual in. So the pressure that was on the city leaders leading up was so thick, it, it, it's like a, an analogy was you could cut it with a knife. It was so cloying, that I really marveled at how those two men stood up to this pressure. And we were betrayed totally and unexpectedly by the state police. Because they showed up that morning, as the alt-right was already marching into our town, and said, "We are off the plan. We are not going out into that mess and pulling people apart." That was their job, they had, we had planned with them, that was their job, to stand in front of the barriers and to go out into the mob, basically. They said, "We're not gonna do that," they got behind the mob. And that's what, that's why a lot of people, me including, had interactions with the state police, and I felt like they looked right through me. We couldn't get them to respond. I was right next to the fellow who shot the pistol at, I think it was Cory Long, and I remember hearing something, and with all the noise going on and yelling, it sounded to me like somebody had hit a stop sign with a stick. It turned out to be a pistol shot. And a former mayor was right there, he saw that individual, he went directly to the state police and said, "There's an active shooter in the crowd, you gotta do something." They totally ignored him. He went downtown to the mall and made the same report, and they still ignored him. I took a video of those, it was about five or six, and this is on august12.space, because I didn't know a pistol had been shot at that point, but I wanted a, I wanted some record of the state police being there. When those fellows saw me videotaping them, one of them nudged the other and pointed to me like, "We're on tape, and this guy's, this is not gonna be good."
This guy's trying to dox us.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and then he left the line. It was the only time I had seen a state policeman leave the line, either on August 12 or the next day, when Jason Kessler did his press conference. Their duty, their orders at that point were to stay in line and observe. If somebody was in serious danger of being killed, then they would make a move. But to my way of thinking, then it's too late. So my question is, who gave the order to the state police?
I can tell you who it is, and I'm a conspiracy theorist by nature. I talked about this with Dave Norris on air. I think it was the governor.
Well, it's funny you should say that, Jerry.
I think it was the governor that was telling folks to stand down.
Yeah.
And it could be potentially a way for him to leverage catastrophic events to further his personal platform.
Well, and, you know, I'm not a conspir--
Well, what do you think about that?
Well, I think you're a very smart man, Jerry. I'll put it that way. But, you know, people can see why I think that, and, and then they can, there's an email link on that, on that website.
Talk about, let's sizzle reel his answer right there, because that was so real and authentic. One of the things I like about you is you're a genuine, authentic person. You've given us 70, quick math, 78 minutes of your time, I know you're a busy guy, and I know your time is your most precious commodity, so we will wind down the interview. I do wanna give you an opportunity where you can take the show in any direction you want, where you connect with that camera there, and we'll turn this into what we call a sizzle reel, and syndicate it for a 30-day period across our network, a quarter million people will see this. We will send you all the sizzle reels that we've done so far, the show in totality, the show package on I Love Seaville, for you to leverage in any way, shape, or form you want. We also, you know, what I try to do is, take a young man, and Harris Tolber, and bring him out of his comfort zone by bringing him on the show, and ask him what he's learned today, so we'll close the show with that. First, before we get to you, HT, let's give, you know what, are you ready to go of what you learned today?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, all right, and then we'll close with Bob Fenwick, interacting with the camera anywhere he wants. Harris Tolber, director of the program, what'd you learn today, my friend?
I, I really enjoy Mr. Fenwick's background and some of his life experience. It gives him some credibility to his camp, his campaign. So particularly, when you were talking about the Landmark Hotel, that was, I like how you talked about how it's like a safety issue, because, you know, I was on my way, even to the, like, the parking garage the other day, and just looking up at the hotel, I was thinking to myself, "There's no way that this isn't a safety hazard at this point." Like, there's no way, there's not debris blowing off of this thing sometimes. I liked how you talked about, when people come out of town and look at the hotel, it, you know, for a while, it seems like it's just a building under construction, but after about five years, you know, it's just-
It's the norm.
Yeah, and it's just an eyesore to people who actually live here. And lastly, when you were describing the August 12 events, I mean, I had chills when you were, when you were relating it to, you know, your war experience, and the similarities, and how, you know, that, that relationship. So, yeah, I really enjoyed having you on the show. I think that Bob Fenwick has a lot to offer this community, and I think he has Charlottesville's best interests in mind.
Well, said Harris Tolber. I'm gonna give Harris Tolber some props, and Bob Fenwick some props on that, with our trusty sound machine. I've thoroughly enjoyed this interview. Herb Porter said you made the right decision with the statues, Bob, move them to the, any battlefields, you're right on point.
Yeah.
Herb Porter, that means a lot, if Herb Porter's saying that right there. Before I give my final thoughts, let's live, let's give the Charlottesville City Council candidate, Bob Fenwick, a chance to interact-
Yeah.
-with that camera there, and go anywhere you want.
All right, well, this, this, you know, people say they have no real control over their government. This is a city council election. If there's anything we have control over, it's our city elected leaders. And I would submit that with my experience, my common sense, and, and look, being able to stand here, to sit here with Jerry for 78 minutes, whatever it was, and go at the pace that we went, I think you get some, you get some, you understand where I'm coming from, basically. It's hard to try to throw a trick answer when you're going that quickly on so many different subjects. So I would ask for your support on June 11. I'm gonna need a lot of help. I need people to work the streets for me, as well as knock doors, and, and of course, the financial part of it as well. So, look, this has been, I'm worn out, Jerry. This has been incredible. You're doing a great service. Harris mentioned what he learned. This is about education, and this is about the future of Charlottesville, Virginia.
I love it. I love that answer. I thought you did well, and I'm not, you know, I'm giving you props here, I'm giving you genuine, authentic feedback, that I am a high-energy guy by nature, and this is a fast-paced tempo program, unlike any other in central Virginia. And you took every question, and you didn't sidestep a single question. And I think that's a testament to you. I think sometimes that could probably get you into some trouble.
Yep.
Same with me, okay? We say what's on our mind, and we deal with the ramifications oftentimes later.
And I think we're better for it.
You know, we're 100% better for it, because we're real people. We're not people that are trying to, like, smoke and mirrors.
Yes.
We're real, and that's why people connect and like us, okay? It's 'cause we're genuine. So I'm grateful for your time. You gave us your most precious commodity, which is your time. Thank you, Bob Fenwick.
Thanks, Jerry, appreciate it.
I told, hey, our pleasure. We closed the program the same way, and I wanna let you know who's coming on the show tomorrow. Sunshine is coming on from the Piedmont Housing Alliance. He's gonna join us, the CEO. Tomorrow, we'll talk affordable housing. We're also gonna welcome Jennifer Jacobs from AHIP on Thursday. Friday, I'm in New Jersey with the Satellite Office, so no show Friday.